Hey Tay, are you there? Cool. Hi, everybody.
Hi Sarah.
Hi Sarah.
Howdy, howdy. Sasha. Hi Olivia.
Hi Sarah.
Oh, Joni! Oh, I mean. Cool. So Joni, obviously you're back from California.
Yes.
Cool. I loved, I loved the photo of the fifth birthday.
Wasn't it adorable?
Yeah.
That's a little. Christian.
Right, right, right. So Sam, we're expecting Rick Caldwell, yeah?
Um, as far as I know.
Okay. No Chris, maybe Frank and maybe Marty.
Maybe Kathy.
Maybe Kathy, of course.
You know, I'm sorry, I've been trying to respond to emails and I've had a hard time with my email. Um, so when Tammy sent out the one yes, um, Saturday, asking people to reply if they would be at the meeting, I sent it to her, or I replied, and then today, in my spam, it bounced back saying undeliverable. So I don't know if it's that I'm still having trouble with my computer, or... But it's been happening to me across the board with my work emails and personal emails, so.
I've been having email problems too, so maybe it's not us, maybe it's the system.
But.
Rick?
Hey Rick. Hello Frank.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Go to an aid, one more board member for a quorum.
I think that's right. Oh. Oh Marty, whatever.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey Marty.
Hey. Hello, everyone, hi Joni, hi Olivia, Joni, you look so serious, so look. That's better, yay!
Hi Marty. Kathy.
Hello.
Cool.
Oops, sorry.
I think we got everybody we were expecting. Chris won't be here and Tammy won't be here. So I guess we'll call the meeting to order. Um, we've got Sarah, Sasha, Frank, Kathy, Marty, board members, did I miss anybody? And then as guests, we have Olivia register. And. And Joni, and Kent Martin, and Darcy Munn. Is that, oh, and Rick Caldwell. I think that's everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, Sarah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Rick.
May I make a request with regard to the agenda?
Sure.
The, I would like to request that the STR discussion be put off till the next board meeting. The STR task force would like to have a chance to speak to you folks through themselves other than me. And they're unable to do it tonight. And I, I think one more postponement is, is, is a courtesy that the task force has earned.
Okay. So let's take that off the agenda for tonight. We'll ask Tammy to add it on to the next one.
Thank you.
Um, Sam?
Yeah.
Could, could we have a second to the agenda before the discussion to take it off? And then I have an amendment to the agenda that I'd like to make as well, please?
Second.
Okay, there you go.
I, I would like to move Kent and then, so agenda item number four and agenda item number two to the beginning of new business, so that the people that are here for public comment have to sit through as little meeting as possible to, to make their comments.
Alright.
The people from the public, not the people here for public comment, sorry.
Okay.
Just so if we can.
Do that. I think item number one.
Those guys up.
I think item number one, since Chris isn't here, should be put off till the next meeting too.
Okay. Um.
Second.
Marty?
So does that?
Yeah, I just want to, uh... Oh, let's, so second means it's done, right? We don't have to go all aye or nay, or?
Yes.
We will when, when we're done with the discussion. Go ahead Sasha.
Um, so can I make a new motion for the agenda then, please?
Yeah.
I would move to approve the agenda that we strike new business number one and new business number five, being the discussion regarding the building code update and the short-term rental ordinance. And that we move Kent Martin, his discussion to just under the parking issues. So, so our new business will be parking issues, Kent, then Halloween, then the budget committee scheduling.
Okay, sounds like a nice short meeting, that's good. Go ahead Marty.
Okay, um, as everyone knows, the, the museum was broken into and it didn't get on the agenda, it's not really an emergent, but I'd like to make sure that it's on the next agenda, that's the only thing.
And I apologize for that Marty, I told you that I'd get it on the agenda and not completely slip my mind.
That's fine, it's no problem. There's some research that needs to be done.
We'll get it on the, we'll get it on the next agenda for sure. Yep. Okay, anymore?
Will you want to have Judy here for that?
Um, it would probably be a good thing, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll get her.
Well, she didn't have to come tonight because we thought, but we didn't, so she's fine with the next meeting, she knows about it.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Alright, and we'll, we'll have Tammy send both of you an agenda for the next meeting. Okay, any more comment on the agenda? All in favor of Sarah, or Sasha's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we approve the agenda. Is there any public comment that's not already on the agenda?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay. Seen no public comment, well, the bill payments gonna have to be put off till the next meeting because Tammy didn't get the bills typed up for us. Um.
Sam, what, what was the reason for that? Just out of curiosity.
She's dealing with some first, personal issues, some family issues. Alright, um, approval of the minutes from October 12th, did everybody get those? Any changes to the minutes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Such a lovely smile Sasha.
Okay. Staff updates, Tammy's not here and Paige on vacation, so, um, we'll move on to parking issues. Olivia?
Yes, sorry, my internet just froze, so I missed if you said anything before parking issues.
No.
Okay, good.
It's your turn to talk Olivia.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yep.
Um, I'm just have, I need clarification on parking on Main Street and the street below it because there's, has been some issues with the tenant in 940. And, um, I just want to make sure, or I just want to know, is, are public, or is the public parking for businesses and residences, and is it first come, first served, or I just need some clarification on that, because there's been some issues, please?
My interpretation of the ordinances that have to do with parking is that parking is on a, a first come, first served basis, there's no, basically no assigned parking.
Right.
But I, I read your, your note and I think we do need to try and do something to help the situation out, I'm just not, not sure what's the proper thing to do, um.
Um, for me, I just needed to know that it was okay that I was still parking there, because I have my two vehicles, one of which is a truck and one is my Subaru, and I park them in front of my residence. And it's on public parking, so I just wanted to double check that I wasn't in the wrong just in case the tenant there approaches me again, I just want to be able to be like, well, I confronted the town board and they said it was fine or not, or, and it is, as far as.
That, that was my interpretation of, of the rules, um, Sarah, do you have one to say?
Well, I, I was just curious, Olivia, do you feel comfortable elaborating a little bit on what Brandy's concerns are?
Um, sure, uh, she just keeps asking for, well, first she, like I said in the letter, she called my brother-in-law John Boozen at work before confronting John and asked him to move, asked his work for them to ask for the truck to move. And he, she never said anything to any of us or he before that, and then she called the sheriff on my Toyota. And she, um, before confronting me or asking anything about it. And so then, um, she then asked me to move my truck again last week because she needs it for a rental, or she's renting out her space. And she asked it for customer parking, but I told her that this was a public street and that I'm parked here legally, that that's what it is. And, uh, then she said she would approach town board as well. And so I said I will too, and that's when I wrote the letter, just so I have it all down and I gave it to you guys.
Olivia, I'm sorry to make you repeat, I, I'm not sure I.
No, that's okay.
I didn't, I don't know if I received the letter, I'm sure I did and I just didn't read it, but.
Oh, no, no, that's okay.
The, one of the reasons I ask is that Brandy has asked to meet with me and Sam to talk about, and I'm sure these are connected, forgive me for saying this, whether this is a business-friendly community or not, and what she needs to be aware of and prepared for. And so I just, this is helpful background information to maybe, maybe know about when we have our conversation with her, so thank you for elaborating.
Of course, yeah.
Marty?
Uh, I have a question about, uh, would it be appropriate since the, it's being initiated in front of the full board? And I'm comfortable with like, I, you know, not, not denigrating what's going on in any way, I just, uh, just want to know, should it, is, would it be appropriate to have it addressed at a full board meeting, rather than, I don't want to say sculping, that's too negative, but, uh, than trying to divide and conquer, although that is the current political, uh, agenda of one of the soon to be hopefully, anyway, I don't want to get into that, but anyway, you get what I'm asking, right?
Yeah, and Marty, my only thought there is, well, my feeling is being a public servant, if a town resident asks to speak to me, I feel I have to say sure. Um, she hasn't elaborated except for that general, general characterization. And maybe I shouldn't have asked, I shouldn't have said Brandy, maybe I shouldn't have asked Olivia for the clarification, but, I, I feel Marty, that I cannot say no to a private citizen asking to talk, talk to me. And, um, so, I mean, I just can't do that, so.
Yeah, no, I fully agree, as, and, or even as a private citizen, whatever it is, but at some point, uh, and I trust your judgment completely, if you decide that it would be better to have the whole board address it, I'm all for that, and if not.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that, that's just, you know, I, I just think that.
Marty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, as, and, and Sam hasn't even weighed in here, he hasn't responded to Brandy's request.
I didn't get it.
Oh, okay, well, you were, you were on the email, Sam.
It may, it may have gone to my spam, I haven't checked my spam in a day or two.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, I'm all for talking to her and.
Yeah, no. No decisions are made when we talk to a citizen if they should be addressed by the board, I guess, is what I would say.
Like I say, I have utmost confidence in your analytical and idealistic marvelness, the both of you. What is appropriate in terms of including or, or, you know, banishing me from discussing it.
Okay, Sasha's been very patient, sitting there with her hand up, so Sasha, go ahead.
Um, my only comment on the matter is that I, I agree with Sarah, and I think it's important if somebody wants to bring a concern directly to a board member, I mean, as a form of vetting, there's no reason that that conversation then can't be brought to the entire board. But I, I can understand the desire to have a preliminary conversation with an individual before sitting in with whomever may be at board meetings. So I, I don't think that there's anything out of line or out of turn with that, uh, with that procedure.
Oh, me neither.
I, I mean, as long as we stay with the, there aren't three board members in the place at once, which I think everybody is very aware of, and I, as many conversations as we can have, the better. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say, I don't have any apprehensions or misgivings about any conversation regardless of the topic, as long as, you know, everybody knows that going to individual board members doesn't result in a solution that's from the board, it's a conversation. Yeah, so, that, that's my two cents.
Alright, Kathy, your turn.
And my two senses, um, just to let everybody know that's on the call, that she has brought this to the board. She was on the board call as a public person, two calls ago? Is that about right?
That's right Kathy, she wasn't, yeah, 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 that's right.
Yeah, and she brought up pretty much the same concerns, only from the opposite side, obviously. And, um, Sasha, you then found the parking ordinance and read it at a board meeting and so on and so forth, so.
Right, right.
I think we all know where this, where the board stands.
Yeah.
Or what the board has been told.
I think Tammy also followed up by sending her the, the ordinance, the text of the ordinance as well, right? Yeah, so, so, so I didn't mean to mislead, she didn't say parking to me and Sam. You know, she said business-friendly community, she might be considering leaving the community depending upon what she comes to learn, so.
Maybe looking for a cinnamon bun recipe. I'm sure, that should have been part of the lease, Sarah has to give her the cinnamon bun recipe. And give everyone she doesn't like cardiac arrest, and eating the fucking things, yummy.
I, I would, I would very much welcome the opportunity to speak with her about this, and maybe it'd be such a thing that after we talk to her, we could, um, get a meeting together between the registers and her and try and come to a, an agreement that'll be good for everybody. Would you be open, would you be open and, open to sitting down and talking with her? With, man, Sarah's mediators?
Um, me, myself?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, if that's what she wants, sure, I, I'm not hesitant to actually talk to her. I just want to know what, I guess the ordinance says, because I don't know what it says, to be honest, and I didn't look into it, which.
Limb, we can send that to you readily.
That'd be great. I just want to know that, like, when I say my car is here illegally, because it is insured, it's registered, it's running, um, that I can park it there?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
And my, my interpret, interpretation of the ordinance is that, yes, you are in the right by doing that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a different interpretation of what the ordinance says?
No, I agree with that, it's legal, it's registered, it's public parking, and, uh, anyway, that, that, we can discuss that later, we're, we're trying for a short meeting, we shouldn't be able. And I realize who real guilty party is here, so just don't grin at me, you two.
I, I would like to figure out some kind of a solution for everybody, if you'd be willing to talk about that. I'll get ahold of you after, after we meet with Brandy, and maybe we can figure something out to where we don't have problems, don't have the squabbles and, and that. Sasha?
Um, I, I just feel like all of the questions are coming down to the, um, the vagueness in our parking and street ordinance. Um, and while I'm happy to have any conversation with anybody about it, until we address our ordinance, I feel like those conversations, one, we might get ourselves into a position where we say something that then we realize shouldn't be in the ordinance. Or two, we send out disinformation. So in my opinion, all of the parking discussions across the board really come back to that we need to take a deep look at our ordinance before we address individuals regarding it. Um, so that's my only, uh, hesitation caution that I would throw out there, is until we're confident in our document, we need to not give people information.
Yep.
Uh, Sam?
Yeah, go ahead Frank.
I'd just like to express that, as of right now with the audience, and it always has been, that parking in the public streets is not a sign to any one person. Uh, and, uh, we should stay that way, I mean, I have people park both sides of my lots here, on this side, when they're hiking the trails, and I don't go out and run them off, because it's public road and it's public parking. It's not a sign to anyone. The o, the only thing close to it is that we have the sign that, uh, the parking directly in front of the post office, uh, just out of politeness should be for, uh, access to the post office. But just so you know, um, I see no reason to start assigning, uh, parking lot on the public streets to various individuals or businesses. So I just wanted to get that stated, thank you.
I agree. Marty?
Legal question, uh, I totally agree with you Sasha, I would love to go over the parking ordinances and tailor them more to our unique character. The question I have however, is that if there is an ordinance now, whether it's a good ordinance or a bad ordinance or a neutral, do we not, does it not have to be brought into play or utilized until that time? The other legal question is Georgetown just put a temporary moratorium on an issue they're dealing with. And do you have that much misgiving about the current ordinance to think we might want to do something regarding parking until that is addressed? That, that, that's the two legal boohas I wanted to throw out there. That, that, that's the two legal boohas I wanted to throw out there.
So, my, my main concern as far as our parking ordinance, not there's anything necessarily wrong with. But we have lost identification of fire lanes. Which I don't want my house to burn down, or anybody's house to burn down. Because the fire truck can't make the corners. And we've discussed that at length in previous meetings. That needs to be addressed. The other issue that I feel like needs to be addressed, especially since it's snowed eight inches. Is our town employee needs to be fully capable of plowing the streets and plowing those fire lanes. And those are the two things that are the most important. And if we have street parking on one side of designated streets. Cars can be parked there. I'm not saying reserved parking or anything of that nature. But we need to make sure that we have appropriate fire lanes, appropriate plow lanes. And that visitors coming to the coffee shop, to Brandy's, to the bread bar. Know where it's acceptable for them to park. And can do that and take advantage of the town and the seven thirty trail and go up and walk through the cemetery, whatever. I think that those are very important pieces that are kind of missing. And that's the part that we need to look at. Like, I, I don't care to squabble with anybody. I want us to be compliant with emergency services. And I want our town employee not to have to plow around cars that have been parked for two years that aren't registered anymore. It's not a reasonable thing to ask somebody to do. And that's, like, that is the basis of my wanting to look at this order. Those things need to be addressed. They're matters of public safety and the safety of our town employee. That is important.
Okay.
Neighbors arguing fine.
Let's put a review of our parking ordinance on the agenda for the next meeting. That way we, we can take action on it. Right now, today, there's not a whole lot we can do, because a review of the ordinance wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to answer Marty's question. I wasn't trying to soapbox.
But, and since you brought it up, I believe on several occasions, there was direction given regarding the signs on Silver Street.
Hey Marty, I can't hear you.
Okay, there we go.
Much better, much better, thanks.
My voice. But on, on several occasions. There was direction given from the town board to install the existing signs. That when I last saw them were on the bed of the dump truck, so I know we have them specifically on Silver Street to address that being. A fire lane. So that's just, and guess what? That's a coin of clarification, inflammatory clarification. It's a new concept.
Okay, do we have any more comments on this? Should we move on to the next item? Okay, the next item is the five forty, no, yeah, five forty Water Street. Development. Um, Mr. Martin would like us to issue him a building permit to put in the foundation. A permit only for the foundation, um, so he can then get it in before the ground freezes this, this fall. I've spoke with, um, Kelly. He doesn't have any problems with it. Rick told me that he thought that that would be okay. Both of them said as long as we have, uh. Signed engineers drawing for the foundation, which I believe we do. Is that not right, Kent?
Uh, yep, that's right.
Then, I believe we should go ahead and issue him the permit for, for the foundation only. Also discussed it with Chris. Chris isn't here tonight, but, um, he didn't see a problem with it. Any comments?
Sam? You're here? Um, uh, I'm, I'm inclined to, to be supportive. I guess I, I realize some of the concerns are that. You know, if we give Kent to go ahead and they, they put the foundation in and then there's a change because of the. You know, the ordinances that we are in the process of. You know, developing and, and accepting. One, can we go back to Kent, um, which I would hate to do? Or, do we have a pretty solid assurance that we're not gonna have to go back to them and say, hey? Dig this section up because.
The discussions that I had with Kelly and Chris and Rick. Were basically that the part of the building code that affects the foundation is not. Much different between what we're, what we've got now and what we. Are looking to adapt. And I, I believe Kent, didn't you tell me that you thought that your plans were, um. Engineered to the newer standard?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, the steel frame and the foundation are at least two thousand fifteen. Just because engineers don't work to, they, they won't match a thirty year old code. So they're at least two thousand fifteen and they might even be two thousand eighteen. But yeah, there's very incremental differences in, uh, in foundation design over those three years.
Sasha?
Sorry, I just, a quick clarification. I know it was covered in the last meeting when we talked about this. But the, um. The discrepancies that Kelly had mentioned and things like that, those were all above ground. Or not, I shouldn't say discrepancies, concerns. We're all above ground concerns with the mixed use of the property. So, I mean, it, with that in mind, then I'm, I'm of the mind. That this should go forward and that those will be addressed as things continue from the ground up.
Okay. Do I hear a motion from somebody to approve a building permit for the foundation only, for the building on five forty? Okay, a second?
Second, Sarah.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, Kent, I'll let, I'll let Tammy know and hopefully we can get that out to you here in a day or two.
All right, we appreciate it. If you keep talking about parking, I'll stick around.
I think, I think we're done with parking for today.
All right, I'll be back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
All right, bye.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Okay, Sarah, the budget committee.
Oh, okay. Sam, do you want me to give a quick update?
Yeah, give a quick update. Don't let me forget to go back to the Halloween celebration. I skipped that.
Oh, no, do it, do it.
Okay, let's talk about Halloween then. Um, Sasha, would you like to take that one?
So my, um, my thought with Halloween. Was that I would like to try and do a pumpkin patch in the garden next to the small town hall. I will buy electric candles so that we do not burn anything down. Um, but we could possibly have it for a period of time. Everybody's outside and we could make little goodie bags ahead of time, so it's not the door to door. Um, and. You know, we say masks, we say all the stuff so that we're all following the same rules. But we can be outside and spread out, but the kids can still have a mini something. So that was, that was my suggestion and then maybe we could have a couple prizes, you know. Best kindergarten pumpkin, best, what, I don't know. It's not totally thought out, but. I know my kids wanna put costumes on and see people and get some candy. And this seems to be the most, um. Covid appropriate that a town could promote. So that, that's my suggestion.
I, I like the idea, have, have some morgues, um, maybe the town could kick in. Fifty dollars or so to, to buy prizes for the best pumpkin carving. Marty, did you have a comment?
Uh, I think that's great. So, the, the kids are gonna bring pumpkins to the pumpkin patch for display. Correct? Is that the concept of, okay, great. I remember way back, well.
Marty, we're losing you.
Turn your video off.
Can't hear, what'd you say, Marty?
Hear that?
That's better.
Okay, yeah, I turned off my picture.
Marty?
Yeah, no, I was just asking Sasha how she would feel about if there's someone who is, who wants to, you know. Do something like that within the framework of running it by you, so we don't permanently scar the children.
You go.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I love the idea and, um, in terms of how. Candy bags are put together, will we just, just persnickety stuff, um. One, do you want help? Two, will be stuffing bags with gloves on?
Good point.
And the, um, my understanding of the county rules, if you're doing something like that, then they need to be set for seventy-two hours. Before they're then distributed. So we would need to do it on Wednesday.
Yep, yep.
To then have them sit for the appropriate amount of time, that then the kids can grab them off of a table. And be distributed, is, is my best understanding of how these rules work.
And, what time of day are you thinking about?
Um, I think it depends on how cold it is on Saturday. But my thought was like a, like a six to eight. Like, kids can start bringing their pumpkins at six and then we judge at seven and then. They can like have a little slip that they fill out for their pumpkin. You know, and stick it with it. And then if they win, then we let them know. I don't know. I don't have a total plan. This is just my, my best Covid guess.
I, I like the idea.
I would like to see us kick in a little bit of money to, to help fund this, um, maybe fifty, a hundred dollars.
Yep.
And I, I also, um, I left a message for Cindy. In case Peeps is, Peeps usually does the haunted house. We're clearly not doing a haunted house this year. So, um, whatever crossover we have there, but, um, I didn't hear back from her before this meeting. I'm sure she'll call me back first thing in the morning. So I will, I will let everybody know where we're at with it, um, by email tomorrow afternoonish.
Okay. Kathy?
I would like to move though in support of your suggestion, Sam, that, um, we authorize to pitch in. I don't know, fifty or a hundred dollars, hundred? Candy and the goodie bags and so on and so forth. So that when you get your email together, you'll already have board approval for some money.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries, um, I'll let Tammy know and.
Um, Sasha, are you thinking that you'll just put some, like a big sign in the post office or around the post office or something? So we can get some children notified?
I was gonna call everybody and do kind of phone tree status. As well as put a, a notice up in the, um, in the post office. It, it seems the phone tree is still the most effective way to get things out there, so.
I'm sitting where the boys carved pumpkin yesterday and realized there was pumpkin everywhere.
I've got two kids in town covered. I'll tell Joe and Tracker. Tracker's Joe's best friend, so. They'll probably do something together. All right. So now Sarah, budget committee.
Yeah, just real quick, we need to schedule the next budget committee meeting and. Sasha, I think you, Sam and I are the only ones on the call who are on the committee. I, I, I think we wanna. Try to do something this coming week for sure, um, and. And so I, I don't, we don't know what Chris's schedule is, but. Um, maybe I'll schedule with folks separately or hopefully enlist Tammy to do the job she's supposed to be doing on that. Um, instead of having me schedule, but, um, forgive me. Um, a, a, and I have updated the spreadsheet to now include the updated. Pro, uh, profit and loss information that Tammy completed through. I'm gonna say the end of September. I'm sure some of it went into October, but, um, cause I got the material. Sometime in October, but I'm, I'm prorating, assuming that we have, um, November, December. Uh, October, yeah, October, November, December yet to see. So that. Uh, that's all done, so we have something to look at this coming week. I, I wanna, you know, just double check the numbers and. And things like that before I distribute it to everybody. I do need to sit down with Tammy because, um. I, I think most of this stuff is really straightforward, but there are about twenty some odd lines that. Um, she either does or doesn't have in the profit and loss. Material that I entered into the spreadsheet compared to the budget that we submitted last year, so. Part of what I've been doing is, um, uh, adjusting each of the. Spreadsheets for general, water sewer, et cetera, to accommodate the differences in her spreadsheet. And again, before I waste the board committee's time, I, I wanna sit down with her and. At least have an explanation for you guys about why there are twenty some odd lines of difference. Um, and again, I'm sure it's straightforward stuff. It's just not clear to me. So, um, I guess the short is that either Sammy or, uh, Tammy or I will be following up. With the budget committee to find a time this coming week.
Okay, I'm available any night after four thirty. Sasha?
And my, my, mine is the same. Our, um, our homeschool schedule lands us done usually by four.
Okay, that's good.
For the most part, that's good. This Friday, though, I'm not available.
Yeah, not Friday, of course.
So, that's, that's all I got.
Okay, that's great, good.
Okay.
And please, if I don't respond to your email, text me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know why my email universe hates me, but. Please.
Okay.
I'm, I'm glad we had that talk the other day in front of the town hall, Sasha, cause I was really thinking you just didn't like me or something. Oh, all right. The only thing left on the agenda for tonight is the mayor and committee reports. About the only report that I have is the Covid numbers are definitely going up in the county. We've got two businesses in Georgetown that I know of that are opposed because of it. Everybody stay safe and do what you can to keep the dreaded virus away. Other than that, Sasha, go ahead.
Sorry, I did have one additional comment about the businesses in Georgetown, is they did have. An overlapping employee. And it seems that they had one event that brought all of these employees together. Um, so, it, it does appear so far that it was a single event. That, um, has, has caused the concern for both businesses. Um, and after having talked to both business owners. They are very committed to handling this to the letter, um. And making sure that they're doing their part. and making sure that they're doing their part. So, um, I, this may be kind of an aside, but there was some animosity about those businesses going around. Not among anybody on the board or anything like that, but, um, from talking to the Health Department and those business owners, they are doing their very best to handle it appropriately. So, if you hear information contrary, um, I, I don't believe it to be true. From everything that I've researched, they are doing their best to handle it appropriately, so.
And I, I also talked to Dean from Mothers and I talked to Dr. Ryan, the County Public Health Director, and I agree one hundred percent with, with Sasha's comments on it. They're, they're doing everything they can and I think they're responsible business owners, so anything you hear to the contrary, it's just rumor.
Yeah, so, so to clarify if I could, Sam, Sasha, the criticism was, um, to the side of them not doing enough versus, um, doing too much in a politically adverse climate, or what was the nature of the concern?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, Sarah.
To me, it's, it just smacks of politicism, Sasha.
It does.
What I'm trying to get a sense of is, were the businesses being criticized for not doing enough or for, for doing too much?
My understanding is that they were criticized for not doing enough, that they helped cause this issue.
Got it, got it.
And from, from everything I've heard from the county health and from the business owners, in my opinion, they are doing the best you can with a shit show.
Got you. No, Sasha, tha- tha- and Sasha, Sam, thanks for the clarification. Sasha, do you think it's worth telling people about what you heard about Summit County?
Um, uh, I can. Um, Summit County had a very, very large uptick, um, in confirmed cases at the point that people were evacuating Grand County, um, or evacuating Granby into Summit County. Um, and the statistics show that that had something to do with it. But at John's work, they were told that there were a hundred extra cases last there. Now it's, um, I'm, I don't have the number in front of me. There it's six hundred and sixty confirmed cases, I believe, for Summit County. I can pull it up really quick. Um, but the major uptick has been in the first week of October. Um, and they think in part that had to do with evacuations, that other counties opened fully while Summit County remained restricted. Um, that that played a part in it, um. I mean, and, and that's, you know, conjecture on my part and, you know, partial news. But I just, I really think that even with Halloween, with our conversation about Halloween in mind, it's important that we present a unified wall of stay the course. We all wanna stay in business, um, and in support of Summit County and ourselves and, you know, all these businesses and everything that, that we're supportive of people trying to do the right thing. So.
Cool. Thanks, Sasha.
Yeah.
Okay, and just one more comment. Marty, have you got your vote in for Trump yet?
Um, I voted, or wait a minute. Yeah, I put it in the box, but you don't wanna know what office I voted him into.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Kathy, did you have something else?
Um, when I was looking at the calendar to see when Halloween was, I have marked on here that we have a town cleanup on Friday and I think that was on the thing that came in on the, in the, oh, one of the things that was sent in with our, um, water bill or something, somewhere I saw on a piece of paper that we have a town cleanup on Friday.
Hmm.
Okay.
I think it was on the piece of paper that came out with our water bill last month or the month before.
I vaguely remember that.
Sounds like a well organized event. Sasha?
So just to clarify my COVID information, Summit County is up to six hundred and sixty-seven cases. Um, active cases with fourteen new being added in the last twenty-four hours. October nineteenth, they had nine hundred and twenty-four cases. And as of October twenty-fourth, they were up to nineteen hundred and twenty-two cases. So, the first two weeks of October, as was discussed, have been a substantial jump for all counties. And we went from twelve to sixty-eight in Clear Creek.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify and give actual numbers.
Thank you.
That's where we're at in our two counties.
Gosh.
Okay, and Kathy, your question on the town cleanup, I will get with Tammy tomorrow and see what it is and I'll send an email out and update everybody on that tomorrow.
I think it's a non-thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Sounds about right.
Now with the snow, we're not cleaning up anything. I just was looking at it and thought that was kinda weird. So the other place that's closed, is that Alpine or is it someplace else?
Alpine, yeah.
Mothers and Alpine, yeah.
Cause Alpine was doing an amazing, amazing, amazing job, so that's real sad.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. I'm ready for bed.
Night.
Good night, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, you too.